And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. This is the October regular council meeting for the city of Nowland. Mr. Administrator, would you please call roll?
Mayor Phelan?
Here.
Councilmember Alders? The President, Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
Well, Councilmember Jacobson.
All right, we also have City Administrator Scott Lehner, Deputy Clerk Natalie Johnson, Lieutenant Bill Jacobson from the Sheriff's Department, and Assistant Chief Joe Lawrence from the Fire Department. All right. And we'll... Any amendments to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing and hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written, I guess. We're not amending it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, as presented.
As presented, yeah.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Blake, second from Councilmember Greenberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we just looked, there are no floor items that we have seen here. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, item three. We have a number of items here. Approval of the city council meeting minutes, the regular meeting, September 13th, 2022. Approval of claims, September 12th, 2022 through October 10th, 2022. And a treasurer's report. Approval of resolution appointing additional election judges for the 2022 general election. Approval of resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the 2023 Anoka County SCORE grant agreement for our residential recycling program with the county. And me is accept the third quarter financial report as prepared by Financial Advisor Lori Jaeger. F is approve resolution authorizing the purchase of Lucas chest compression system for the Fire Department. And G is approval of resolution authorizing expenditures to repair the cardboard baler machine. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Rainville, do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Lieutenant, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Good to see everyone this evening. I have a report for you for the month of September 2022. We responded to a total of 144 calls for service, one call out to the bar none facility, an alarm call, three medicals, and an animal complaint. A note on the call out to bar none, that was a reported assault between a staff member and a juvenile. Staff member was trying to direct the behavior of one of the students out there and unfortunately turned physical, and the juvenile threw a chair in the direction of the staff member. Ultimately, Sheriff's Office did respond out there, we assisted with mediating the matter. The juvenile was charged, to be charged with a fifth degree assault on that. Some other calls for service from around the city for the month of September. On the 5th, just after midnight, we got a call of a suspicious activity in the 6700 block of 207th. A 911 caller reported seeing a person running from the area of her attached garage. Seeing this was probably suspicious, she also saw headlights in the area and called us. Our deputy arrived under five minutes and was able to verify that there was indeed an attempted burglary at that area. We do get calls like this quite a bit where we'll receive information on suspicious activity, we'll respond, and we'll find that, you know, there's some explanation for what occurred. This is a pretty rare call where someone, you know, happened to be awake and witnessed to this activity and called us right away. We do believe that was an attempted break into the garage, based on the dew in the area, and we believe that there was a vehicle probably in the area as well. Deputies checked the area immediately, weren't able to find that vehicle, that case is active and open. On the 7th, I'm going to fire a little public...
Can I just, real quickly on that?
Yes, sir.
So 12:33 in the morning?
Yes, sir.
And five-minute response time?
Yes, sir.
That's excellent, so that must have been a county car?
Yes, sir, it was a countywide, responding in and out then for that, yes.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir. On the 7th, at about 10:18 in the evening, suppose that's night, we had a couple of our volunteer deputies, mountain patrol in the city of Nowland, discovered what was obviously a fire that was too large to be a recreational fire. They investigated, this was the 8300 block of Viking Boulevard, they did find an active working fire and contacted the Nowland Fire Department and some other on-duty deputies to come out and assist with that. Fire is probably going to talk a little bit more about that, so I will leave it at that for now.
What are volunteer deputies?
So, we have deputies that are uniformed, they work Uniform Patrol, but they're basically reserve officers. At the Sheriff's Office, we call them special deputies. They wear a uniform just like this, but they're non-sworn volunteers. They drive marked patrol vehicles, and they help with things like preventative patrol, parking enforcement, animal enforcement, vehicle lockouts. And then they'll also respond on-call to large-scale incidents, they can help us with traffic control and crowd control and stuff. These folks work for, totally free, for the Sheriff's Office and for the city of Nowland when they're here, so it's a great asset for us because they're highly trained folks, they carry a lot of the same tools and equipment we do, and are able to put eyes on things like this. And I won't speak too much for fire, but these types of fires are the danger response when everyone is asleep. And for them to see this fire and call for help, obviously is very valuable. And we work, they work hundreds and hundreds of hours throughout the county for free. The community may have seen them out at the Heritage Festival, some of those folks were out there. So, yeah, they're a regular staple within our organization, and they've, even compared to years prior, have really stepped up how many hours they're providing, so it's a great resource for us and for the city, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just ask a question. You were saying they, do they run two in a squad? Are they paired up, or?
Yes, sir, that depends on the experience of the deputies.
Okay.
There are deputies that are, that have been with us for a very long time, or deputies that hold rank of sergeant above due patrol on their own. We do have sergeants in that program, we also have a commander of that program, a non-sworn commander that runs that program. Newer deputies, deputies in training, will ride two to a car.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving on to our next call, a number of crashes that are worth noting, unfortunately, over the month of September. Single-vehicle rollover crash on the 12th, 2:40 PM. This was another young driver, Viking Boulevard near Jasper there. 16-year-old had minor injuries. This driver reported she swerved to avoid a rabbit in the roadway, causing her to lose control and rolled the vehicle. Something they're training in driving school, and something we train too, is you want to brake as hard as you can for that kind of stuff, if necessary, but unfortunately, swerving can create a lot more danger for folks, so probably an inexperienced driver in that situation, so.
Hey, I had a rabbit avoidance in my front yard, and she was off the road for 100 yards and took out most of my bushes. And I couldn't find any sign of a rabbit.
No rabbit?
It was active, but...
Sure. Yeah, well, the rabbit was not located by our deputies either. Obviously, in those situations, our concern is that drivers would be driving distracted, which we've talked about before. In this case, there was no clear evidence of that, but again, as the mayor pointed out, there was also no clear evidence of a rabbit in the area, may have fled the scene, but that's to be deterrence, so.
Hopefully.
Again, we're relieved that the driver only had minor injuries. Again, those rollover crashes, unfortunately, we've seen a lot of them, can be particularly dangerous. On the 18th, 5:53 PM, we did respond to a motorcycle crash again on Viking Boulevard near Cleary Road. This was a motorcyclist who lost his hat, he looked back to kind of see where his hat went, and lost control of his motorcycle, and unfortunately left the roadway. Again, that was a serious crash with some serious injuries, and again, you know, especially in the fall, the deer are moving like crazy, so please be careful. And then, again, distracted driving, especially on a motorcycle, can be also particularly dangerous, so we encourage people to make sure that they're seeing where they're going and negotiating the curves there. On the 19th, at 9:55 PM, another vehicle crash. This one, we ended up getting the report that it occurred at the Bill Suparet here on the corner. Investigating deputies found that the driver had struck a tree nearby and then had actually driven to Bill's. They investigated further, determined that driver was intoxicated. That driver was over twice the legal limit to drive, so legal limit's .08, he was above .16 and struck a tree and then left that scene, so that driver was arrested.
And they've been very fortunate, because car tree accidents don't generally end up well, so.
No. They certainly don't, especially when alcohol is involved. And the last one I'll kind of point out, on the 27th, 8:43 PM, the Nowland deputy was parked at Viking Boulevard and St. Francis Boulevard monitoring traffic. He observed a vehicle pull to the side of the roadway, I'm not sure if this driver did not see the deputy, did not see the marked squad car. The driver parked on the shoulder, got out, and he basically urinated into the ditch at the side of the roadway in front of the deputy. The deputy decided to investigate what might be happening there. He did detect signs of impairment, that driver was ultimately arrested at the scene for DUI based on probable cause, but ultimately was cited with careless driving.
So he didn't have a DUI?
In this particular case, the driver failed field sobriety tests, was arrested based on that. By the time they were back at the station, they issued the test, and the result was a .07. The legal limit in Minnesota is .08. Now, the driver could have been charged with DUI. Anything over .04 in Minnesota is what's called in case law relevant evidence to a DUI, but in this case, the, based on the totality of the circumstances, the deputy felt that the correct charge would be a careless driving. That's a charge we see a lot of the time when drivers are very near the legal limit, but not over the per se limit, so the driver was cited, and will likely have to go to court for that, too.
Sure.
And I don't have much for miscellaneous, we still are, we still are under on our calls for service year-to-date from 2021 to 2022. One thing you'll know is our traffic enforcement is up, is up quite a bit. The city has asked for that proactive traffic enforcement, and our folks are out there getting that done, and we're stopping, stopping and citing the serious violations, the serious speed and the DUIs and stuff, and that's going to be a direct result of having more dedicated coverage, there's deputies in the city more that can, you know, direct their patrol towards problem areas, and we're seeing that in the stats. That proactive work is definitely getting done, so.
I want to, just to clarify there, too, we have asked for targeted areas, not just to, like some of our neighboring cities sit in the ditch and look for any infraction, but there's a lot of cut-through traffic with the construction going on, and they're exceeding the speed limit, and people that are used to walking their dogs or riding their horses, and in certain areas are concerned about some of the speed. So we have asked, based on residents' complaints, to target certain areas, so it's, just for the record, it's not a general increase, but it is targeted to look at people especially passing through.
Yes, yeah, we have been directing that patrol in those areas, you know, the problem areas that we see, the problem areas the city, the city tells us about, and again, a lot of that, a lot of that stuff, when you see in the stats, traffic arrests, those are going to be, you know, more serious violations, significant speeding violations, DUI violations, those, those types of things are, have been our focus, and so we're certainly not out there just stopping cars and looking for stats, we're out there trying to make a difference, just, our goal is ultimately to make the roads safer, so.
Per chance, do you know if the person relieving themselves inside the road is a Nowland resident?
I don't have that information with me, but that's something I thought...
There's a little concern, because the person who was shoplifting right in front of a uniformed officer?
Sure.
Was a resident, and I'm hoping you don't see a squad car sitting there. But maybe they're not a resident, and they don't know what a sheriff's car looks like, I don't know.
I'm not sure, we do, we do put our name on them, pretty big, so we'll, I'll follow up with you on that question.
Thing to note, if there was a meeting today at bar none and taking a look at the stats, one of the things that the bar none representatives, first of all, they maintain a stable staff out there, which is very helpful, the meeting was held a year and a half ago, they had action items, they've been following up on that. One of the things in particular was to not call the sheriff all the time and declare an emergency. And looking here, that year-to-date, last year we had 54 calls to bar none, and this year 24. They have been training their staff to only call in what the sheriff would consider an emergency, and I think that's been going, among other improvements, been going very well, so.
Yes, sir, it has, and, you know, I've talked with the staff over there a number of times about their new protocols, and when it is appropriate to introduce law enforcement into those situations, and they certainly have been doing a great job of, you know, mitigating those problems, making sure things are staying under control so that law enforcement present is not needed. But, yeah, that is also clear in the stats, that they've been, they've been doing a great job out there.
The other thing that they, they mentioned, and we should mention to your team, is they appreciate the proactive nature coming out when there's not an emergency for youth that are not accustomed to seeing a uniformed officer, other than in threatening situations. They said that's been very helpful in getting people to understand, these are, these are not antagonistic situations. They also were quite pleased with the sheriff's take kids fishing up to, they did, wanted to comment on that, too, so they're very appreciative of the relationship that's building there, so.
Thank you, yeah, we've, we've been working hard in that regard, and I'm just happy to hear that things are going well, and to see it bear out in the response data, too, so.
Council, any questions for lieutenant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
On the problem type summaries, under suspicious or SUSP, we have 14 incidents, and underneath that looks like suspicious person. I just, could you clarify what that is, SUSP and SUSPT?
So, the P stands for priority, so they will categorize suspicious activity, or most of our call codes, if you see the P, that would be something that the dispatcher has designated as a priority call, and that can be for a wide range of reasons. Something that they hear on the line, it could be some of the circumstances surrounding, you know, the time of day, or what they're seeing happening, so P generally is for priority call.
Lower the number, the higher the priority?
The, the SUS, with the P on the end, the P is what signifies priority.
And what I'm saying, on the categories here, we have priority zero through seven?
Yes.
So seven is lower priority?
Correct.
So the 14, 10 are in a category five, and four of them are in category six?
Correct.
And on the suspicious P, those are in category three?
Correct.
Other questions for lieutenant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Hey, also, just to follow up on Councilmember Greenberg, the priority then is also if it's in, in process versus, like, I know you have robbery, robbery P, so if it occurred, if they waited three hours to call, it's not as high of a priority, so. I just would like to thank the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and your employees for coming out and participating in the Nowland Heritage Festival. I know the residents really enjoyed being there, so thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Especially the little kids.
Yep.
Yes, I'm happy we were able to be there and be a part of that, and I've heard that it went well, so.
It did.
I'm glad to hear it, so.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Joe, you want to do yours from there?
If that's okay. All right, mayor and council, for the month of September, the Fire Department responded to 15 incidents, that was about half of the, as what we did the month prior. We had an average response time of 11 minutes and 7 seconds, that is a 59-second increase from August. The average number of firefighters attending calls for service was 3.8. The Fire Department reports a $2,500 loss from fires during the month of September. On September 4th, the Fire Department assisted Ramsey on a house fire on the 17000 block of Garnett Street Northwest. On September 7th, we responded to a vehicle fire on the 8300 block of Viking, resulting in the $2,500 loss of property. On the 12th, the Fire Department assisted Anoka County and Alina on a single-vehicle rollover accident on Viking Boulevard at Jasper. Minor injuries were reported for this incident. And on the 18th, the Department assisted Anoka County and Alina on a motorcycle accident on Viking and Cleary Road. Additionals, I believe, if it didn't get announced, I can't remember the timing of it, the state aid was made available, I believe the amount was right around $35,000, which was a significant increase than what we were anticipating based on some of the estimates. And other than that, we're still, we're getting closer and closer to more independence with the Fire Department, so we're looking at some different times of the day when they will mutual aid with St. Francis or other neighbors, and then other times of the day where they are completely solo. So we're definitely making progress in those categories. Hiring has been slow, we were kind of set on one person, we had put them through a lot of the process, and I believe that person has now dropped out from employment at this point, so there'll be more to come with some of that stuff, but we do have some leads on a few other people that we're kind of pushing through, getting through the preliminary stuff as well, so, so that is kind of where we're at right now.
Council, any other questions for the Fire Department?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I'd like to extend the same thank you to the Fire Department for participating in the festival, I know the kids love the open house.
Yeah.
And again, it's fun to see our public safety people there, and it gives that opportunity for residents to see them in a, in a time where it's not an emergency situation, where tensions are high and things like that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the special touch to have the Nowland logo on the helmets, kids, kids and their parents like that a lot, too, so.
I know our, our group that works in Pub Ed was excited to start ordering some of that stuff, too, so.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
And I just happened to see today that you were up at St. John's, no, St. John's Kids came to the fire station?
That I wasn't aware of, so.
Oh, sorry.
No, but if they were, good.
Yeah, and they were saying how much they really liked, they had fun doing it, touring it.
I can comment on that because I spoke with Assistant Chief Schrein.
Schrein.
How do you say that?
Schrein.
Today, he said it went really well, it was a lot of fun, he and his first graders and second graders, and they just really enjoyed it, and I think they're going to do another visit for Fire Prevention Week.
Fire Prevention Week is...
You know, that's one of the exciting things about having our own department and firefighters willing to participate in those types of things, because we weren't getting any of that when we were doing powers with another city, and so it's nice to see some of that going on. Do we have any additional information on the fire tanker?
So, the last, mayor and council, the last report is it's still on schedule for January, at least last that I spoke with them. Now, they are located in Ocala, Florida, which the hurricane kind of hit that part of Florida pretty good, so I have, we have been talking with them about some stuff with the St. Francis truck, which is from the same company. We haven't heard any, any holdups or anything due to the hurricane, but, yeah, that's, I'll follow up on that and make sure that we're still on track for January.
And I want to just go back to the state fire aid, the Fire State Aid. If you remember, when we were talking about the pension, we were hoping for $26,000, and that was in question because we had to have legislative support, because typically, you don't get that, that state aid money if you're not actually operating on January 1st of the year, so we got special legislation to allow us to start in April and still qualify for, this is state aid for 2021, paid in 2022. When the reports first came out from the State Auditor's Office, they had all the money going to Ramsey and nothing coming to us. So we made a few calls, we went back through our records, and we worked very hard on this. Joe worked with Frank when he was here, we called and verified, not only did we get to 26, but we got almost $7,000 more than that.
Wonderful.
So, a lot of hard work to get it, to qualify for to begin with, a lot of hard work to follow up, because they weren't going to give it to us, and, and so we're very pleased that that much more money is going into the firefighter's pension, and for your records, Natalie, that should go straight to para, you wouldn't have to pass that through, so.
Really?
Really.
Oh, that's good, thank you.
So, that way, we have no way of sidestepping anything, it goes right into the account, and so the state takes care of that, but as long as we verify that that's come through, and I, I did check the auditor's report, and it was still looking, pleased to find out how much it was. So thank you for your hard work on that. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, administrators update.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, as you can see on the agenda here, we kind of moved a few things around, maybe even added a thing or two, so one of the things we did add was the administrator update, just kind of keep us informed, or keep all of you informed, kind of some things that are happening during the month, and key, key things we want to pull out, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the old business, new business at the bottom there when we get there, but a few things I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention is our Public Works employee, Eric Mattson, actually had an 18-year work anniversary on October 4th, and we made a fun little morning of it, and, and had donuts, and, and had a card where staff passed it around and wrote a few things to him, I think he was somewhat surprised, and it went over very, very well. So it's something that, as staff, we want to continue to, to recognize our folks and call things like that out, and, and this was the first, first opportunity we had to do that with Eric, so it went over real nice, so. So if any of you see him along the way, thank him for his years of service with us here. Second of all, I'd like to bring to your attention the Fall Recycling Day, it's just a friendly reminder, you know, we have it scheduled for the Saturday, the 15th, from 8 to 1 PM, I think at the last council meeting we had, we just talked about if anybody wasn't going to be able to make it, to please let me know. The only one I know that isn't going to be making at this point is Mary, since she's going to be out of state. But other than that, if I haven't heard from you, I'm just kind of assuming that you'll be there at some point or participating in it, so. We also have, and have staff present, and Public Works will be present, so should be a good showing, and we should be ready to do what we need to do on Saturday, so. Third of all, all of you should have received an email from me on an upcoming work session that we were planning to have, that is scheduled for October 20th at 5:30. As you can see here, I just put in there the planner Stockman and city council, just some of the things, and I know I sent an email out on this, but I also want to just reiterate here, a lot of what we're wanting to talk about at that meeting is kind of process, so we're all kind of clear on how the process works, where I may fit into that process, just making sure that staff is clear on when something comes in through city offices, how the process is going to be provided, for example, if something comes through, I've asked my staff to make sure that I'm aware of anything that comes along, so I can either track it, or make sure it gets to the right person, or ask the appropriate questions, and so on and so forth. But a couple of the topics that I did put in that email, we're going to talk about the process of IUP, CUP, code compliance, some assessments that were provided to us that we may be still taking a look at, that we'll want to have a conversation about at that meeting, but it's really going to be defining a clear process moving forward, so everybody knows who's responsible for what going forward.
Can I ask, Scott, so as you, as you define the process, will you be, I think one of the things we've had a lot of problems with is recent, recently, and really throughout, is complaints. People file complaints... People file complaints, um, and the council leader doesn't know they've been filed, or they, there's a long span between when they're filed and when they're cleared up. Is that something you're going to be defining or helping us define and taking some of that responsibility on yourself?
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. That, that is exactly what I'm referring to when we're talking about some of the process. Uh, right now, one of the things I've asked my staff to do, if somebody was to come and file a complaint at the offices, was to make sure that you notify me first. I wanna know what the complaint is, when the follow-up uh to, to the resident's going to be, uh, what does that time window look like? How long are we gonna have to be able to bring it to resolution? As I'm going through some of these things, I'm noticing that some of those, uh, for lack of better word, I'll say, is getting a little stale, right? There's some time that's collapsing there, and I wanna reduce that time down as much as possible. If that means I need to intervene my, or inter- you know, intervene myself into it, if that means that uh Planner Stockman and myself have to have more communication when it comes to that, um, but it's, it's all of the above that you're talking about there. And I'll just give you a quick example. There's been a couple um code compliance things that've come in in the last ten days or so. Uh, I've asked Liz to schedule and then send me an invite. I'm actually on the job sites with her, or at the residence house with her, kinda walking through the process, understanding her style and, and how she processes through it, and, and making sure that I get a full understanding, and, and maybe even sharing some of my own thoughts on it, if you will.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
We have been through this several times, procedure, how we want it handled. We've gone over it and over it, so, I mean, if there's problems with this, probably we have to look at what we've told Liz to do, and then when she does it sometimes, we hold back, we, we, we are not anxious for a resolution quickly because this person is upset, or uh, we have a long history with this person, so there's a lot of things. It's not that simple that uh, we're gonna just all of a sudden. We have been at the table with this process several times since I've been here in four years, and uh, so this isn't anything new. And there's a, there is a definite procedure we all agreed on for Liz to follow. And so if she's not following it, that's a surprise to me, but we've never, we've always had it laid out, what, what we wanted her to do and how to do it, and, and the letters she was to send, and we have, she wanted to be more direct, we didn't agree with that, we pulled back, we wanted nicer letters without a lot of um directness.
Mm-hmm.
And so now, if we feel she's not doing that, that's partly the council's fault.
Sure. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Blake, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want you to walk out here and thinking that she isn't following the process. Uh, part of it is I'm trying to learn what her process is, and then when she and I, her and I meet on a very regular basis, and we're talking about the I U Ps and the C U Ps and the code compliance, and she's been great about, you know, taking me with on some of these things, uh, but there are some things that are out there that have been going, that have been out there for some time.
Definitely.
So what I'm, so what I'm, what I'm encouraging her to do is bring me in, let's work on it together as a team, try to figure out how we can get it resolved, if it's something that we need to bring to council, uh, that's why I thought the workshop was gonna be really good opportunity for us to just kinda roll up our sleeves a little bit, talk about some of these things, and talk, I'm not trying to, if you guys have a process, which I'm aware of, I've, I've looked at it, and you're thinking that that process is acceptable, okay, then we'll go with that, but I think there's some things that we could fine tune that Liz and I can work together and make it even better along the way, because at the end of the day, who benefits from that? We all benefit from it, but certainly the residents benefit from the very beginning, so.
I agree.
If, if things are out there, and, and I'm taking phone calls from some of the residents because they want an update on something, to me, something needs to be looked at, or that system might be just a tad bit broken and just needs to be put back together a little bit. So I, I'm not trying to sit here tonight and, and point fingers at Liz, that's not what this is about, this is a team effort. I talked to her today about it, let's, let's get together again. So when we're having our meetings, we're having very good discussions about what's going on in the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I think that's a great idea. I'm very interested in, you know, one of the reasons why we brought you in is your depth of experience. Um, the way you're gonna look at this, it's gonna be with fresh, new eyes.
Right.
New perspective, um, and you're gonna get to see the history of us working with Liz. Uh, we've given her guidelines, she's made progress on those. Um, it is a difficult situation, uh, some of these go way back, like Linda said, but I think this is a great starting point for all of us to get you um informed and educated in this particular area, you know, and we'll be all there at the same time, and we can give our inputs, so I think it's a great idea.
I agree, I think it's a good idea, but I think that these, these things that we're talking about, that you have been saying, oh, they've been going on and on and not resolved, well, that's, that's partly our own council's fault, not only Liz's, because some of these, we don't seem to want to come to, to a resolution with because we're, we've got, it's fragile relationships.
Gotcha, understood. Thank you.
And so we have to go through all that again, and I, I'm a hundred percent with Joel, that you're fresh, this is the good part about new people coming in. Even the new people that'll be taking over for Joel and I, it'll be a new, new people with new ideas and seeing this in a different light. Except, he's not so new, but most of us.
All right.
He's got new perspective.
Yeah, let's hope.
All right.
And uh, the last thing I just wanted to, to update you on here, um, is the update on the snow plowing plan. So yes, we, we know that's coming, and uh, I've been working with Public Works, and we've been working our plan, we got salt ordered, we have gravel already ordered, uh, money in the budget for everything, so everything's looking good there. Um, they started pulling the snowplow equipment out to the garage here uh yesterday, uh, bringing it over to Public Works, we're gonna start getting things uh attached to the truck, maintenance, everything that needs to go along with it, uh, it's all been moving along pretty smoothly. We also have uh, a couple applicants that have applied to be able to, to do uh snowplowing with us, with, with Eric and, and, and Joe. Um, so we're in the process of going through that, or I should say, I'm in the process of going uh through that and screening it a little bit, and then I'll sit down with Eric and Joe and say, okay, what is, what does our plan look like from a staffing perspective, and, and what is it gonna take to be able to make sure that we get these roads plowed in a timely fashion? So they've been real receptive to it, the, the guys uh been doing a lot longer than I have, obviously, but we're working together as a team to make sure everybody's on the same page, so. The other thing I just wanted, I'm sorry.
Wait.
I can, I can come back to it, it's a good.
I was just gonna say, you know, I'm in signing papers and checks uh every so often, and I've seen, you know, what I, what I see is an excellent working relationship with you and, and Joe and Eric.
Good, very good.
Camaraderie, as they, feel free to come in your office, and, and just even at times the jockularity of, you know, it, it's not a strained relationship at all, I just, I see them going out of their way. I won't, I won't put you on the spot, but just uh, some of what we've seen, uh, is an excellent working relationship, and so I, just even getting the equipment out and done, I had some of the work on the well, um, you know, Joe's insight into ways of saving money on some of things, I mean, it's just, you know, the things they don't have to do, and they're volunteering to do, and just the communication I've seen has been excellent with the times I'm in there, and if that's consistent with what you guys are seeing, I, I think we're in a really good stance.
Wonderful.
I appreciate those uh, those comments, Mr. Mayor, that, that's what we're striving for, and, and we are meeting on a regular, but we meet in the morning and, and uh, we meet in the afternoon and debrief on how the day goes and plan what it is, and this week, just for example, we sat down, Eric and I and Joe sat down, and we went through line item on the budget, and they were smiling and grinning, and they're like, now I know what you're talking about, you know what I mean? So i- it's really going well, and I, I'm glad to hear that you're, you're recognizing that when you're in the office, so thank you for that feedback.
Good.
The last thing I'll say about them is um, it goes along with what we were just talking about, um, Eric, Joe, Randy, Dave, the two part-timers that I also, um, really did an excellent job getting things ready for the Heritage Festival, and.
Yes, I was.
You know, I, I, I was there that day, um, I had my family there, and I heard a lot of people talking about how well the park looked, and how neat things were, and lights were working, I mean, a lot of the little details that m- most people wouldn't even recognize probably, and, and, and those guys were busy, believe me, and, and they did a really, really good job, so again, if you see them out there, and they did it with a smile on their face, and, and they were great, you know, I could go on and on, but I, I'm just, th- these guys have really been doing a really, really good job since I've been on board, and I, I very appreciate that relationship, and it was really demonstrated uh at a very, very high level when in the Heritage Festival.
And the cleanup, unbelievable. I'm sure Mary and Jeff were part of it.
We do that on Saturday, but there's a little, there's stuff, they, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would just echo um Administrator's words, um, the staff worked harder than, I don't wanna say it, than they've ever worked before, but they really shined when it came to working at the park and getting things done. It wa- it looked so nice, and it's very nice to be proud of what it is that's there, and that the residents see that, and that we'd made the changes in the pavilion, and the pavilion is a hundred percent improvement, and I have some pictures that Dana sent me, I'll send you to, send out to council, so the, the, the monies we allocated for that, and even staff went in there, it was like, wow, this looks really nice, but they were, and they continued to say, what, what else, what else? Are you sure nothing else? Are you sure nothing else? Didn't we used to do this? Well, yes, we did, but we've made some changes to have them not have to do so much, um, but they did just, they outshined themselves, they were.
It really did require.
It did.
I, I did tell them.
It was such a rainy day and everything.
Yeah, I had told them before and afterwards, you know, we were cleaning up, even on Monday, they, they came and helped clean up with the generator and get that back to Oak Grove and, and uh, uh, you know, publicly, if anybody from Oak Grove is watching, that we appreciate their generosity and the, and sharing the generator with us for this event, uh, but Joe and Eric did the pickup and the drop off, uh, but I told them, I've never seen the parks look better than they did this fall, and uh, they did a lot of work, and as Councilmember Rainville said, uh, they kept saying, what else can we do? You know, how, how do you want this set up? And uh, so uh, I, I just thought the teamwork was, was amazing, you know, I think that there's a, there's a lot to be said about, you know, the teamwork that's going forward in, in, in the staff, and uh, there's certainly direct evidence of it, uh, in so many of the projects we've taken on, but this one in particular, I think was, so, thank you and thank them for us.
We'll certainly do that. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my update.
All right. Lighting and zoning, there are no agenda items uh this month. Lighting zoning was canceled last month, the zoning was pushed to October, there's a public hearing, uh, and then some ordinance update discussion in the October meeting zoning. So we have, uh, one of the things we, we've talked about is sometimes things disappear, you know, we, we get all the new business coming up, we forget some of the old business, and so we wanted to add uh follow-up to the old business on City Council, and followed by the new business, so. Uh, last month, we had a, an ordinance proposed by staff uh to regulate lawful gambling within the city of Now Then, uh, had significant issues that uh needed to be addressed by staff, uh, so Administrator Lainer, could you bring us up to date, since it's not in our packet, what, where do we stand with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, so um the, the update, uh, so I sat here last month, and I said I was gonna do everything I could to try to get this thing wrapped up by this meeting, and um, it wasn't for lack of trying, there, there's, there's a lot of tentacles, and there's a lot of pieces that go along with this when you start getting into the statutes, and, and this statute relates to that, so um, in going through that and the work that we put into it, I just didn't feel like it was ready, I, I, I'm a attention to detail kinda person, and, and if I can't bring a paper to the council, I wanna make sure that it's, it's very precise and, and very, now, there's been a lot of work that's been done on it, we've, we've got a pretty good stack of paperwork there, but it just wasn't ready for me to bring forward, so my apologies to you, it wasn't for a lack of work and effort towards it, but there's a little bit more that needs to be done, so I'm gonna need to ask for a little more time before I bring it for you for discussion, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I appreciate the fact that you didn't bring forward something that's not ready to have a discussion on, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree, you know, we've. All right.
We've been down that road many times, and it doesn't get us anywhere.
I, I, I appreciate attention to detail, and certainly there were a lot of questions that, uh, we had fifteen, twenty questions that came up after the last meeting, I'm sure that's part of what you've been addressing, so, uh, appreciate the thoroughness. And there's, there's no rush, I mean, we're, uh, as I said, the, the one uh nonprofit that's been contributing, will continue to contribute, the other one will, we haven't been getting anything from them, so going another month or two is not gonna, is not something we budgeted for, so. All right, so onto the new business, a resolution to appoint Bergen K D V as the city of Now Then auditor for the years twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. If you remember, this uh information in the packet probably looks familiar because Bergen was one of the candidates we had last year, uh, from what I can see here, that uh, we didn't get any other candidates this year. And uh, and staff is, is convinced that we do really want to move on from where we've been in the past, and so right now, our, our options are Bergen, option is Bergen K D V. Um, also because people that are finding that there's a demand for these services, the price is a little more than we anticipated, as you can see on the R C A here, there will be an additional amount, because while the audit itself is only slightly over what we budgeted, they have a compilation or an assembly that costs an additional three thousand dollars, so um, there are reserve funds to cover this year's audit, and then in the twenty-three and twenty-four audit years, we'll actually have to address that as part of the budget process. So there's gonna be a little more than we anticipated that's coming here, but we do have funds to cover that. Administrator Lainer, anything else we need to know about?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would point out at a couple of those is that we did send out five um R F Ps on that, and this is when we got that, we initially sent out three, and got the, this was one of the three that came back, and then we sent out an additional couple more, and it didn't pan out, so as, as the mayor stated, that's how we ended up there, and if you're curious on the total dollar amounts, um, if you look at the resolution itself, um, on line three, I did kinda put in all, all-in costs there, so you can take a look at what, what the mayor was referring to there, so you can see what the all-in cost is for, for each one of those years as we go forward, so, but we do have a plan, as he said, and have a way to cover that, so.
All right, so with that, I would accept a motion to approve resolution appointing Bergen K D V as the city auditor for the years twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I so move.
All right, Councilmember Rainville.
I second.
Makes motion, uh, Councilmember Blake, seconds. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item, approval of resolution authorizing mayor to execute an agreement to purchase, the purchase and installation of new signs for our Frisbee Golf Course and in the, I would say the Twin Lakes Park area. So we have something here that Councilmember Rainville brought in, um, is this aligned with the resolution that we have here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So um, Administrator Lainer's been working with Extreme Graphics to uh parcel defined details of what the signs are gonna eventually look like. Um, I had one particular section, if you look at number six on your colored uh sheet with a picture of all the signs, you look at number six specifically, this is the Frisbee Golf Hole sign, so when you get there, um, it tells the hole, and in this particular case, it's number one, um, and then it gives you the par, and it gives you how far. That little line that's on. That little line that's on that box is an indication of where you throw the frisbee. If you look at my sheet, this is what normally happens at other golf courses. They'll give you the actual layout of where you're throwing the frisbee, not a stick. So I determined to, uh, design, redesign them, so whoever was playing frisbee golf would have an indication of what the actual field looked like, what the obstacles looked like. So if you look at my sheet paper, and there's a couple back there for anyone in the audience who wants to look at them. Um, my, my idea, if you look to the far right on the sheet that I gave you, uh, that's my idea. So on each one of the nine, uh, signs that go for each of the nine holes, will be stated the hole number, the par number, and then the number of feet. And then in this particular case, you can see, this is hole number one, this is generally what it looks like. It's just a straight shot, so you can see where the tee box is, you can see where the end goal is or the hole is. And I'll make that line a little more descriptive, I'll have like an arrow on it or something like this. But this is the easiest hole, from here on out, the holes get a little more curvier, a little more trees, and I'll indicate those. So when the person is sitting at this hole, they can actually see, uh, per this map, what they're getting into. Um, so if you look at the two examples on the left, it kind of show you what other frisbee golfs are doing, so you can get an idea of what we're trying to convey here. So I had talked to Extreme Graphics and said, I would like to design these nine holes, which requires going out there, which requires topical maps, which requires me to, um, hand graphic all these things. Which, if he were to do it, would require a lot more time. So being that this is an area I'm interested in and I'm skilled in, I'll make the nine signs, give him the graphics, that way he can just print them. The rest of the signs in the park are all text, they don't require any special graphic skills on his end. So this is my idea for the, um, signs for the golf course. Administrator Lainer may have some input on how they may look to match the rest of the park, because I think he's been working with Extreme on how these signs might look. Uh, Mr. Lainer, do you wanna add into that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Greenberg, yeah, I can add a few things. So, uh, I, I agree with everything that you're saying there, been working with Extreme Graphics, um, put together an RCA and a resolution here, but the pictures, um, also in your packet, you'll see that there, there's, uh, there's an invoice in there or a quote in there, if you will. Um, so the signs that, uh, Councilmember Greenberg's talking about there, uh, in the pictures, you can see, so there's a total of thirty-three signs that, uh, we're taking a look at, Frisbee Golf being a part of, the Frisbee Golf Course signs being part of that. Well, also some of the other signs that we, we have in the park area there, to exclude the D N R signs. We're still, uh, we're working on that piece of it. But all, all the other signs that, that are in the park, you can see kind of some of, uh, the condition they're in, and so on and so forth. So the, the, the proposal, uh, is that we would take a look at those signs. The estimate that I provided in the packet includes, uh, replacement of those signs. And then we took it a step further, and we thought, boy, it would sure be nice if we would be able to kind of unify the color of the signs. Because you look at these, you can see some are all, you know, different colors, and so when working with Extreme Graphics, they, uh, they were able to, uh, confirm with me when I spoke with them that we can, uh, unify the color of the signs. And then to go one step further, uh, we would like to be able to logo those signs with, uh, the City of Now Then city logo. So they are willing to do those two added requests that I added them, uh, for no additional cost. So as you see in there, we're, we're looking at the one thousand nine hundred and five dollars for the, for the total package there that we're talking about.
Wow.
And this would be funds coming from the, uh, the capital fund for the park?
Yes, it would be coming from the capital, uh, the, uh, Park Capital Fund, yep. As on the RCA, we have it spelled out on there where it would be coming from.
So Councilmember Greenberg, um, excellent work on this.
Yes.
What, what would your compensation need to be to do this?
Uh, my privilege as a council member of the city.
And you are privileged too, let me tell you.
And a talent. And so, so if we could verify that if they were to come in, are you proposing the, the first one on the left is what you'd be looking at?
Uh.
On your right.
I may have printed it out twice.
I got backwards.
Oh.
I may have printed it out.
I, I was trying to follow what he was saying.
How about this, the one with the Now Then logo on it?
Okay.
Now, I don't know how that works in with what Administrator Lainer had been working with them in unification. Uh, I don't know if this can be a standalone sign, or if somehow this can work into their color scheme, I don't know any of that.
But, but suffice to say, if you're willing to do this work, he can work with Extreme Graphics to see if it affects the price at all. But if you remember, the council had authorized up to ten thousand dollars at one point, so coming in under two thousand. Even if it goes a little more to get this high quality of signage out there, I think it's definitely worth it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, that being said, I went through the park and I picked at the lowest possible budget point just those signs which seemed to be in such ill repair they needed a replacement. This is by no means all the signs.
Yes.
Well, I could go through and say, look, Extreme, I talked to the council, and I told them, I'd be talking to council, be very specific in your, in your bid. Um, I talked to council, they want to do all the signs. Cause at, the way it stands now, I left some signs out there that are in okay shape, they're good for another five years. So if we're gonna do a unification, maybe we ought to do the whole park.
Yeah.
There's, there's not much more, let me tell you, I got most of the signs, there are a few more, and we might as well, as he said, we had earmarked Ken Grand. We might as well, uh, with that being said, go through, do them all, so all the signs are unified, if we're gonna put the logo on them, cause there'll be some that aren't. Secondly, there was a couple of places that did have signs where I thought, I'm, I'm wondering if this needs a sign. So a couple of the shelters didn't have a sign, it could very well be that they had a sign once upon a time, and now the sign is gone. For example, the yield sign, I'm having that put where it used to be a stop sign, but someone stole it. And Extreme said, if you put another stop sign there, that'll be gone. I'm like, well, no one wants a yield sign, so how, how about you put a yield sign there? What's, what, what, I'm missing something?
We're, we're losing stop signs all over, and it's, it's, the sheriff's department is on it, or.
Mr. Mayor.
I wasn't done yet.
The last story.
Okay, now where was I?
You want to redo them all.
Okay, so there is, there's like one spot where there's a post, and there's nothing on it, and I have no idea what went there, so.
There used to be a sign on that post that said, in, in nineteen eighty-two, absolutely nothing happened at this point. And then somebody took it.
Okay.
What? I thought it was serious.
Okay, so final comments, should I go ahead and do that and just go through the rest of the park and say, look, I talked to council, we're just gonna do the whole thing, as long as we're putting our logo on stuff, let's just do all of them. I was going the least possible, the cheapest way.
I, I, I appreciate, uh, your, your efforts in doing that. The only thing I would ask is, in doing that, run it through Scott, so Extreme isn't working with two people.
Sure.
So get, get him the information, and then maybe, since we're doing it, we look at this park as well. And we might as well sign, if we're, if we're gonna put logos on there, and again, I greatly appreciate your contribution of this logo, which we can now put on buildings and in our parks, uh, and that'll be a legacy you'll have forever here, at least till some council decides to redo the logo. But, uh, um, but I think, yeah, if you would work with, with Administrator Lainer on that, so that at least Extreme is working with one voice and, and let's get all the signage updated, this is a good time to do it. So. And then, uh, with that, how does the council want, well, Councilmember Blake, you had something else you want to say?
He answered it, I, I, I agree, Joel, I think you did, I want to thank you, because that's a lot of work you did, and it's volunteer work, and you're gifted, I know how gifted you are with this, you're very artistic, so thank you for that. You're a good, you're a good man.
Well, and, and we appreciate it, you know, again, um, I know, you know, previously, the administration was looking at, uh, doing a, a new logo for the city, and there was a lot of money involved, and, and for the record, you didn't get anything, but you did a great logo, and the city, you know, I'm grateful for it, the city's grateful for your, your work that you've contributed.
Yes.
And it certainly has, uh, saved the city a lot of money, and I think we got a much better product with what you produced than what I was seeing from the more expensive houses that were being proposed. So we thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would agree that we should go and, and, and do all of the signs, because if our goal is consistent marketing or uniformality, then, then they should all be the same, and again, include the Now Then Memorial Park. Uh, there aren't a lot of signs there, but they should be consistent with the other new signs.
Technically, technically, we have a park at, uh, at Morton Farm Reserve as well, that should have an entrance and some signage there too, so. Morton Farm should be included in that. Um, that being said, we want those new numbers to come back, and we'll do this in November. Cause.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I would anticipate that if we're gonna do two, two additional parks and some additional signage that.
Mr. Mayor, my only thought would be, there's some of the stuff he may want to get started on. If it gets so cold that he can't get vinyl to stick, uh, one of these things he's gonna be, um, specifically scraping and painting and re-lettering, uh, number five, if you look on by this there, uh, these are the nine holes. The, the signs on them are steel, and they've been painted, and they're starting to rust, and the vinyl on them is coming off. Um, and he said what he can do, and if there was a warm day, which was today, so I'm a little behind the ball here, he'll go out there with a wire brush and brush those items and spray paint them, cause he said he's looked at all the options for putting signage on them, and there's just no good way to put it on. It's, the best is just to start from scratch, uh, sand it down, repaint it, put new vinyl on it. That being said, time is of the essence, the colder it gets, the less he can do that. And, you know, applying, putting up signs or pounding them in the ground, I would like a, at least so he can get started on some of these things. Um, for sure, number five, I would like some sort of a go for, at Extreme, so they know they can get started somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, I think we've seen from the prices that are quoted here, um, to be under two thousand for the, the amount of work that's designated in these eleven items here, or actually multiple items, eleven different signs. I think we're, we're safe to say that we're good to get started, and then have Administrator Lainer give us an update on additional cost.
Perfect.
So if we can, uh, proceed with at least the, uh, two thousand dollars, the nineteen hundred dollars that we have here, uh, with anticipation, there will be additional cost. And if it, it's, if it's extreme, then he would bring it back to the council at a future date. But it looks like, based on what we see here, we're gonna be good to go, so. That being said, I would accept a motion to, uh, proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I move that the council, uh, proceeds with, uh, what has been presented. Um, Administrator Lainer works with Extreme Graphics, and, um, we move forward with what we have here on this bid and this RCA. And then we work in the next month to determine the remainder of the signs that are necessary, and that would be brought back to us in November.
And just clarifying, Councilmember Greenberg will continue to work with Administrator Lainer, and Administrator Lainer will work with Extreme to, uh, and Administrator will give us information as it's available. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Rainville.
Second.
Have a second, Councilmember Greenberg, any other discussion?
Thank you, Joel.
Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Joel, your, your work is extremely, extremely valuable and helpful, and high quality, and, and your generosity is to be commended, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Alan. Do you go by Alan or what?
Alan.
Alan? All right, we have a, a candidate for recycling center attendant here. Alan, last name is?
Narice.
Narice. With a name like Peline, you always want to make sure you're pronouncing names right. So this is considered for approval for appointment to the recycling center attendant. Um, this will bring us back to the hours we had established, Tuesdays and Thursdays, eleven to seven, Wednesday, Friday, eleven to five, Saturday, eleven to three. And we're waiting on a background check, which, uh, I talked to you before the meeting, shouldn't be a problem. So if you could just step to the podium real quickly and, and introduce yourself, and, and, uh, it's always nice to see a, a face when you're hiring somebody.
Well, uh, I'm Alan Narice, uh, I moved up, I moved to Oak Grove in ninety-four. I grew up, uh, in New Brighton my whole life, until I got up here. Uh, since then, I've been working down in Brooklyn Park and Plymouth and those areas, uh, as, uh, well, my, my latest full-time position was a production planner. I've, uh, done a lot of, uh, work in warehouse management, um, inventory control. I'm very familiar with all the forklifts and pallet jacks and balers, and I've spent a lot of time in warehouses. I would basically, we, the company I worked for, Stone Industries, was constantly either expanding or downsizing. So we were going from five warehouses down to two and five hundred storage trailers, and, um, so I had gotten a lot of experience in, in warehouse operations. I, one of the reasons I applied here is I'm, I'm, my goal is to find a, a job a lot closer to home, and I, I live just south of Saint Francis, so this would be a very nice location for me. I'm very detail oriented, uh, I like to basically, uh, have, be very extremely organized. I've had, I've worked in places that literally just had piles of, of materials and metals in the warehouse, and having to straighten everything out and organize it and, uh, set up an assembly line, um. So I'm very comfortable in a, in a warehouse environment and, and warehouse management, so my goal here would be to initially meet your expectations of running the recycling center, and then, and then exceed them once I get a little more experienced in it, so.
Wow.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Alan?
No. Oh, you're very qualified.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Alan, we're happy to have you, and, uh, our, our community loves their recycling center, and when it's not open, they're very sad. So they're very happy that you're there, and so happy that the doors will be open again, so thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Administrator Lainer.
Yeah, just a couple of things I'd like to add. Alan came into the office and, uh, we, we interviewed him, uh, on October sixth. And some of the things Alan and I talked about is his skills around computer, he's taken cash before, he's ran credit card transactions. Uh, we've all talked about a little bit about, you know, wh- what does the future kind of look like for the recycling center and the individual? And I think, uh, Alan hits a lot of what we were talking about, and, and obviously, initially, just as he said, I can't say it any better, you know, kind of get your feet underneath you and understand, but I, I do see a lot of potential, uh, in Alan moving forward. We talked a little bit about, you know, if the recycling centers look in shipshape, that, you know, maybe we might be able to utilize them somewhere else, in a park or something like that, uh, you know, getting a few things done. The one thing that Alan didn't say that I want to add to that is that he also comes to us with a C D L license. So he has a Class A C D L, um, that if we choose to, somewhere down the lines, we might be able to utilize that a little bit. So he's nice and close, he wants to do a good job, and, and eager to learn, and is there anything else I could kind of do? It's what I took out of the interview, you know, I, I'd love to be able to learn new things and all that kind of stuff. And he's looking, this isn't a bridge to somewhere else, he's looking to kind of put some roots down and, and kind of work his way up, uh, i-if you will. So I was very excited and, and glad that he was able to make it here tonight, so you all can kind of see what I saw when we sat down that day, so.
I think it's very exciting.
Mr. Mayor.
I got a question first.
Go first.
You okay with shoveling snow?
Shoveling snow by hand, well, I try not to, but, I guess.
We have some, hey, one of the things, because either side of the recycling. One of the things, because either side of the recycling center's a fire station where we have some walks, and in this building, where it's, we can't get in with the plows and the, and the snow blowers, so we have to do the steps and the walks and stuff, so it's something that, you know, keeping the front of the, the building open up, obviously, with the bigger equipment, but there is some hand stuff.
No, that's fine.
Administrator may oughta mention that, we kinda.
No, we, we did talk about a lot of things, but the, the snow part, maybe, maybe I, I missed that part, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Blake.
I think we just made a step up in our recycling center, we're very glad to have you, I think that it's gonna help even improve our recycling center because of all the skills you have and your background, so thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
And applying for this.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would just say that, under essential duties and responsibilities, performs other related functions as a parent or delegated, so there's always the others. The, the only question I have, and I know I raised this last time, when we determined the hours, our residents seem to be a get up early, get their work done, and get out of there, so I'm wondering if on Saturday, an eight to twelve versus an eleven to three, but I don't know your thoughts around that, it, to me, it's, it's, again, our, our, when we look at the recycling day, we are busy, you know, and they are there waiting for us at eight AM, so if we could have consideration of that, and then also for an employee, it doesn't cut your Saturday in half, I mean, that's, I think, another thing that you get and get in and get out also.
Yeah, home with your family.
Yeah, yeah, so, but again, I don't know your thoughts on a eight to twelve versus an eleven to three on Saturday, I don't know what council's thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor, why did we start with an eleven to three?
To open up the Tuesdays and Thursdays till seven at night, 'cause that's the other problem during the week, our residents are typically home by five, and get home and get the recycling in, so, so the discussion at the time with the tenant we had was, let's go seven o'clock and shorten up on Saturday. So we did, we added two hours overall, went from thirty hours to thirty-two, and we added two hours on Tuesday and took away two hours on Saturday. The eleven to three on Saturday, I think, was requested by the attendant at the time, and there was some, we actually track when people bring things in, so we're trying to track the most used hours, I might suggest a nine to one on a Saturday, but we certainly can be flexible, as long as whatever we do, we post it. But I think part of what we've been doing is tracking who's using it, by address, to make sure, because we know that people outside of Nauden also use our facilities here, and then, and what volume of activity there is, so that we can adjust this whole schedule based on volume of activities. I think this would be a starting point, and I would suggest maybe a nine to one or an eight to twelve to be considered, but whatever we decide on, get it posted, and then, and then make adjustments, I think, as Alan said, as he gets into the rhythm, he can say, I think we're more productive doing this, he can certainly make the recommendations. And, and staff has a number of statistics already, 'cause I know previously, the tenant was keeping track of when people were coming, and I know Adrian has that as well, so, so we can pick the best hours to be most productive. Do you have any issue working earlier on Saturday rather than eleven to three?
No, I would prefer the eight to noon, I like getting things going in the morning myself, so.
Okay, good.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
If there isn't no other, if there's no more discussion, I would move that we, as part of the, we, we adopt this resolution approving the city administrator to offer the job to Alan Narace as a recycling center attendant, once acceptable background check is received, and that the Saturday hours be adjusted to eight to twelve.
Well, are we to set, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
We decided that we are gonna change the hours, I mean.
That's part of.
That's part of our motion, if you.
I know, but I mean.
You can second and discuss it.
Right now, it's closed on Saturday, so whatever changes.
Okay, all right, I second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Blake, and it's Narace.
Narace.
Narace, right?
Yes.
We'll get it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Are we in discussion?
We're in discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor. I, I like the nine to one, but three of the party say.
Oh, no.
Eight to.
I'm nine to one myself. There's two nine to ones and two eight to twelves.
And three.
What's Linda?
Three opinions.
Well, thinking of him, I like eight to twelve, 'cause that gives him a day, half a day, one, all of a sudden, now you've lost part of your afternoon, you don't get home till one-thirty or whatever, I like the eight to twelve, for his sake, not, not necessarily.
We can see how it goes, but.
Yeah, so anyways, I think that's the determining factor, so I think eight to noon for now, and then maybe in the future, something else can be proposed.
Except for, if everything goes well, this Saturday, it's eight to one.
Yeah.
But we'll all be there to help. Does he start this Saturday?
Provided, he could start this Saturday, you're available whenever?
Yep, I am.
Mr. Mayor. Administrator Lainer.
Yeah, so in my discussion with Alan, we did talk about the recycling center day, he did share with me that he was open to that, and he would be able to make that work. The only thing we're waiting on is, is the background, which I'm fully, in our discussion, I'm fully expect that to be here in the next day or two at the, at the latest, so I put together this RCA, we sent his background packet in Friday afternoon, Monday being a holiday, I'm ex, I'm expecting to see him tomorrow or the, or the next day, so as soon as I get that, I will get with Alan, and we'll discuss a start date and get the things need, needed to be to get him on board, and if we can do that by Saturday, we will certainly do that.
Perfect.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, as a, and I, I think that you remember this, but that is, that the city will purchase you the steel-toed wood tools, that's part of.
And we provide uniform.
And uniform.
And uniform, yeah. We won't have a uniform by, by Saturday, no.
And any other discussion? All right, seeing and hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
You too.
Yes, welcome to Nauden.
I'll contact you as soon as I can get some information on our side, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other items, I move to adjourn.
I second.
We are adjourned.